Um, okay, let's call the orders. Um, we're meeting the boards of directors, regular meeting. Um, and um, please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Do the flag.
The United States.
To the Republic. One nation, one God, indivisible.
Invisible.
Liberty and justice.
Mike, would you do the prayer, please?
Yeah, I will, Bobby. Thanks. Uh, if you bow your heads and join me, uh, Father, please, uh, give us wisdom this evening as we make deliberations. On behalf of our ratepayers and all of our citizens, uh, please help us be mindful of what our duties are. Uh, as members of this board of director, uh, thanks to staff for preparing a, an agenda that, that we can, we can do. And finally, Father, please place a, a strong hand on the Ferryman family and, and let them know that all of us are with them. And, uh, we share in their pain and hope that, uh, that things are, um, normal at some point in their lives as they will never be. But, uh, just let them know how much we care about them. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. A roll call, a roll call, please.
Director Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uden.
Here.
President James Fairman.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, um, Nalani, is there any late communications?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, we did receive like communications from Mr. Jim Mosher. Those communications were disseminated to the board earlier this morning. And during the specific agenda items, I will go ahead and read for the public, the comments that were submitted, if you don't mind.
Bob, I have a que- I have a question on Mr. Mosher's comments, Nalani, and it's basically the, the one about long distance phone calls, people calling. If, I, I didn't understand what he, what he meant by that. Can you elaborate a little bit?
Yes, so for the Zoom meetings, there is a phone number that you're able to call based on your area. Unfortunately, we don't have a seven one four or a nine four nine number that's made available to us. The closest one would be a San Jose number, which is the six six one area code. So that is a long distance number that Mr. Mosher is referring to.
Okay, every, every Zoom meeting that I've been on always references a San Jose number. So that means Zoom is headquartered in San Jose, I assume.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, thanks, Jimmy. Okay, thank you much.
Are there any ceremony matters and presentations, Nalani?
No, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, um, public comments, uh, all matters listed on the consent calendar, or public comments. Uh, this is, this time is set aside, uh, for person in the audience to make comments. I believe, um, um, Jim Mosher is the only one that's made comments. And I don't see anyone else from the public on, on, on our, um, Zoom meeting, so we'll, we'll go ahead with the consent calendar.
Move for approval of consent calendars present.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or absent, absent.
Mr. Vice President, I'm sorry, I need to do a roll call vote for each of the voted items.
Okay.
Thank you. Director Schaefer.
Aye.
Director Perry.
Yes.
Secretary Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice President Uden.
Yes.
President Fairman.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Okay, it looks like the, there are no, there are no public hearings that we need to do.
No, there's not, Mr. Vice President.
And so we go on to general managers and force. But consider voting for one candidate, the California V F D A boards of directors, C P. Um, the term is from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three. Um, I believe we are nominating Arlene Schaefer for that position.
Yes.
Any, any discussion?
I move to nominate Arlene Schaefer for that position.
I'll take it. Oh, do we need to do a roll call vote on this one?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, yes.
Okay.
Director Schaefer.
Yes.
Director Perry.
Yes.
Secretary Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice President Uden.
Yes.
President Fairman.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, consider.
Thank you.
Pardon?
I said, thank you.
Well, consider approving engineering services ad hoc committee recommendations, which is basically, uh, uh, the recommendation to hire, hire an in-house engineer. Uh, is there any discussion on this item?
Um, let's see, what's that? Hi, you know what I was wondering if, uh, Scott, if I could get a copy of what the ad hoc committee has said. I like what they said. I like all the, uh, items listed. But then it also says the part about the engineer, what he will be accomplishing. And, you know, a year from now, I will never remember it. And I would like to have that so that I have that to look at, make sure he's, you know, doing all of these, it says.
Well, I think it's on your board docs. If you want to print it out, you could.
I want it printed.
I know it's, you can print it out. It's, I printed everything out already and that's included in there. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, it's, it's in the, it's in the staff board what the, what the responsibility of the engineer will be.
Could you do that without doing the whole agenda?
Yes, you just go to that part of the meeting, general manager report. It's like, uh, six, five pages, I believe.
Okay, okay, thank you, because I'm not real technical.
Okay, is that, are you satisfied, Arlene?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, any other discussion? Um, would someone make a motion?
Before you, before we do the action, can we have Scott kind of give us the synopsis of what's going on?
Okay.
Sure, I'd be happy. Thank, thank you, um, Mr. Vice President and the Board Director. So this is a, a, um, uh, continuation basically from our, our June ninth meeting. Uh, we had our study session, uh, we presented, staff presented to the board, uh, a hybrid approach, uh, to our engineering department. Where, uh, we would hire a, a district, uh, engineer, in-house engineer, a P E. And, uh, and then, um, that P E would also coordinate activities with, um, R B H. Um, with, uh, uh, capital improvement projects and the other, and the other, um, programs or, or tasks that the engineer, uh, is, is too much on, on his or her plate. Uh, the, as you know, we have a very aggressive C I P budget. Um, there's a lot of projects out there to be done and, and it can't be, we, we believe it can't be done by one person or one firm. So it'd be more like a, a real team effort between in-house engineer and R B H or any other consultants that can help us, uh, uh, move us forward with our, our C I P project. Um, before you today, the, the board at the June ninth meeting gave the staff the green light to proceed with this, um, proposal. Um, so before you tonight, we have, um, for your consideration is the, when you have to approve the, um, the job description, which is attached along with the salary range, and that's also attached, uh, um, to, to the job description. And then, uh, you direct staff to go ahead and proceed recruiting this position by, by hiring a, a, a professional recruiting firm, uh, which we believe would be cost around twenty-five to three thousand dollars. So those are your recommendations for today and, uh, we are, we appreciate your support and looking for, um, your, your approval tonight.
Scott, can you talk a little bit about the, the, the recruiting process in the, in the firm that your firms you're looking at?
Sure, so we put, we put together an R F P, or request proposal, and it's, it's ready to go. So if you adopt or approve, uh, staff recommendations today, we can get it out tomorrow. Uh, basically, um, we will contact all those firms that's listed on the staff report, including the additional firm, uh, Vice President Uden mentioned, um, uh, on June ninth, uh, which is on the staff report. And so, uh, the, um, process will, uh, include, you know, interviewing the, um, um, the, the, um, recruiters, uh, with the proposals, um, and determine what's, what's best value, um, for, for us. You know, obviously the cost is an issue, but we also want to make sure that the, the firm that we hire has, um, uh, have the experience, uh, and, and has been successful recruiting, um, executive positions in the public sector. Um, and so, uh, we believe, um, the, the recruiter could also expand his or her web out there. Uh, first, you know, that the recruiter will look at Orange County, focus on, on finding an engineer with wastewater and water experience in Orange County. And, and expand that pool. We can expand that tool to state, Southern California statewide. And if need be, we can go nationally, which I don't think we really have to. I think we can find someone within Orange County, but it, but again, with, with recruiters, um, uh, networking, um, they know all the public agencies in California, all the special districts, all the cities. They will go out and, and reach out to those people that they think would be a good fit for us. And that's, with the recruiter, um, is that they have that network capabilities of, of, of who's out there and who would be a good fit for us.
Sounds good.
Mr. Vice President, we also did receive public comment on this item from Mr. Mosher. If you'd like me to read that at this time.
Noel, why don't you go ahead and read that, please, for the board?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mosher writes that the staff report suggests the new district engineer would have flexibility for contracting with firms other than R B H only for capital improvement projects. I would suggest that rather than firmly contracting with R B H for all the services listed under their name in the staff report, those be listed in their as yet to be written on-call contract, simply as examples of services that R B H would be expected to perform if requested. But the actual request to perform them for C M S D would always be at the discretion and under the direction of the new district engineer, who would remain free to select or recommend a different firm or him or herself to perform any or all of them. And comment there.
Thank you, Noel.
Yeah, I don't really agree with what Mr. Mosher says. I think our plan is good as it stands. It's my opinion.
I feel this.
Especially right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've gone through a lot to get it this far, and I just can't see, if we all agree on the same thing, why we would change it.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Arlene. Well, thank you. We need, uh, um, action on this. This is an action item.
I'll, I'll move the recommendation of staff then to proceed with the process.
I'll second it.
I'll, um, roll call vote, Nalani, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Director Schaefer.
Yes.
Director Perry.
Yes.
Secretary Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice President Uden.
Yes.
President Fairman.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to, um, uh, considering approving the, the C A C goals and objectives for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. Uh, do any board members want to discuss this item?
I have a comment. Can I go ahead?
Sure.
I have a problem with the one that's, uh, it says all the different dates, you know, um, the months, what's going to happen. And I'd like to, uh, not include the May one. I don't think on the May one that, um, we should be having them go into our budget. Um, we're elected and we need to, uh, do what we feel. That's why we're elected by the constituents. And it doesn't have any bearing afterwards. They can look at the budget and see what we did. But I can't see that, um, you know, they need to do that in May.
But if I can just say a few things about that comment, uh, understand the C E C, they are your constituents. They are your citizens. Um, so this is an opportunity for the citizens to get involved and, and make comments and suggestions on your budget. Ultimately, the, the, the decision is the board. Yes, you're correct, Secretary Schaefer, that the ultimate decision and adoption of the board is, is, is the board's, um, uh, goal and decision. Um, whatever comments, suggestions that C A C makes, the, the board has, is not required to, to agree or approve them. They're just there to hear their, here's their comments and here's their suggestions. And then we take it to you and you, and you, you like it or not like it. But I, I, I believe, I believe any good, open, transparent government, you should allow the public to view and comment on your budget. And that's what this process is. Allows them to review the proposed budgets, not the adopted budget. It's just a proposed budget. And, and they can make their comments and we give it to the board and then you do what you want with it. That's all this is intended to be. They're not going to adopt the budget or anything like that.
Well, if they had a problem, as far as I'm concerned, they should come to our meeting, say what they want as a constituent, as you say. And that's fine, but I just don't think that they should perceive it and go ahead with it first. That's my own.
Scott, I have a question. You know, they're meeting in May. When do we approve the budget?
You approve the budget in June.
Okay. Okay, I think we can listen to their ideas and then we'll still make the budget proposal in June. So I think it stands okay, Arlene.
It just, we need. I think it's so com- I think it's so complicated that, you know, I, I don't know how they'll be able to understand it, but, uh,
I, I don't either, because they don't meet, they meet in March and then they meet in May. So they're going to have to have a good presentation to make accurate ideas to us, you know? But that's something Scott and the C A C have to work out.
Um, and does any other board member have any, um, discussion? I, I have a concern that, uh, in the January, it's review the Orange County Sanitation District policies. I, 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 I want to ask Mike and Art, uh, how long it took you and how many meetings it took you to review the sanitary district policies?
It's, it's been ongoing and we used to only meet like once a month. And it took a long time. It probably took me a couple of years to understand it.
Mm-hmm.
Back when we first, when I first started.
Yeah, I, I think this, I think this would probably be the purview of an ad hoc committee if, in fact, you know, we, we want, we want to do it. Um, does I, any other board members have a comment? It's, it's, I think it's too, too, too exhausting for staff to do it and then, um, have the C A C understand that, those concepts. Uh, it, it might be better just to have them be briefed on the sanitary district policies, at least initially.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President, if I can comment on that, maybe actually be more clear on that, on that, on that, um, goal or, um, objective. Is, is that we weren't planning on, on reviewing every single policy of O C S D. What, what our, what we were looking at is, is more of the financial policies to make sure that their finance policies are consistent with our policies. Like maybe their reimbursements, uh, or, um, uh, anything to do with finances, really what we're looking at. I agree. If you, if we took every policy step by step, there's no way we can get it done in a day. It would take many days and that wasn't our intent to go at every single policy. It was just more like in the financial policies we were going to look at.
Well, I still feel strong that we shouldn't have them having something like this on fiscal or, uh, budget, a, a way of finances in any way, that we're the ones that should be doing this first. And then they can get it and see what it's like. If they really cared, they'd come to our meetings and they could make comments too. That's my own feeling.
Does anyone else have any input? Uh, would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to strike May out on, um, them, uh, the citizens advisory committee getting that first. I don't have a problem with getting it after. It's, it's, I feel that it's our budget. We've got to, you know, we should be having it first.
I, I, Arlene, I think we'll be discussing it first. But then there, Scott's going to propose, give them an update of what our thoughts are. And then they're just going to make some budget comments. And I think we're okay with keeping it in there. I think it's smart. And best for the public to be able to give us their ideas and we can take it from there. I, I think we're okay.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's not going to, uh, uh, Director Perry is correct. I mean, we're not going to send the budget to the C A C first before the, 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 the board sees it. The board will see a preliminary budget, a proposed budget first. Because, because budgets, you know, there's, there's comments on, you know, it's, it's a working document, you know? So we got it. There's going to be several meetings before you adopt the budget, because you got to, you know, we want to, we want to hear your comments and suggestions, because there might be some stuff in the budget you're not like. Okay, we'll go back to the drawing board and, and tweak those numbers or, or put in a new program. It's, it's an ongoing process, so it's not going to happen over a, a day or two. So I think what Director Perry is correct, the May, the, with the proposed way for C E C doesn't mean they're going to see it before you will. They're just going to be participating in the process and, and providing their comments and input. That's all they're doing.
So I, I didn't understand that we were going to get it before them. And that's what, and that we'll get a.
You'll get a preliminary budget, you won't get one for, you'll, your first one will be proposal, the preliminary proposed budget. And then, because of comments, and then in the June, you'll get your final, uh, budget for adoption.
Okay.
Okay, but I, I like Bob's idea about January. It seems like a lot of work for the staff to bring the C A C up to date. I think we need to rework that a little bit.
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't know what Bob thinks, but I think he has a good thought there.
Well, yeah, I, um, narrowing it to the, the, you know, the financial programs, um, I, I would hope also like Arlene, that, you know, this be brought as an agenda report or put together as an agenda report and, and the board, you know, get to review it.
Yes.
Probably first. Um, all, all of these items need, need to be agenda reports, you know, not, not, uh, extra work for staff. Um, it, 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 uh, yeah, well, one of my, one of my comments was you can't eat the whole elephant. Um, it, it's a lot of work, it looks like to me for staff.
Yes, I agree. Now, um, if we approve this, can you still make adjustments to it with the things that we talked about?
Yeah, if you could, you could, you could put like a big emotion and, and give the general manager authority to, to make amendments or adjustments. This is really just a, kind of a, um, a placeholder, an idea of which, where we want to go. But yeah, it'd be nice if we have some, some, um, discretion to, to, uh, make changes where, where it's needed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. We accept that those changes that the manager can make to make it better.
And I'll second that with a comment, Bob. Um, I, I like the format of getting the topics well out in front. Um, kind of contrary to what Bob is saying about overburdening staff. I think if staff has this roadmap clearly defined for basically a year, it should make staff's presentation process to the C A C a bit, bit easier, I think. So I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call, please, or any other comments?
Um, I'll be supporting the motion as well.
Nalani?
Director Schaefer.
Yes.
Director Perry.
Yes.
Secretary Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice President.
Oh, yes.
President Fairman.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is consider adopting the, um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty five strategic plan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So I'm very pleased and proud to present to you our final document for your approval consideration. Uh, this was a, a, a very, a, a work in progress, a collaborative, a very successful collaborative approach, uh, between all the staff members, the board of directors, the C A C and members of the public. Uh, it, I think, I think, I'm hoping you're, you're pleased with the final document. It, it's definitely a, a very, uh, um, I guess not aggressive, but very, um, I don't know where I'm looking for, but it, it's definitely more ambition. I guess you say more ambition than it has been in previous, previous plans. But it definitely sets a, a course for us for the next five years of what we want to achieve. Uh, so I'm very proud of this document and I want to thank staff and everyone's contributions and, and especially Angela for putting this document together, using her magic, making it look nice. And you did a great job. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
The only thing I would like, Scott, because I, I started to run it off. It's too many pages. If you give each one of us a copy of the, of the strategic plan that we can keep here at home, so we can review when needed. That would be my suggestion, but I like, I like what we've done, but I just need to see a copy of it.
Okay.
Because it took me forever to get through to, and I said, I can't print this.
Okay, not, not a problem. We will print you a hard copy.
Yeah, I, thank, thanks for seeing that, Art, because I tried to even download it, you know, PDF style on my computer. And it takes like fifteen minutes to download, so, uh, for whatever reason. But yeah, I agree with Art. I'd like a copy too, Scott.
Sure, not a problem.
Yeah, takes the whole cartridge.
Exactly. I'll move for approval. Let the strategic plan presented tonight.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll take the roll call. Director Schaefer.
Yes.
Director Perry.
Yes.
Secretary Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice President Uden. You may have dropped off again. President Fairman.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Do you want to wait till, um, Vice President gets back on?
We can.
Because I'm sure for the record, you want to make it go five oh, or I'm sure he wants his vote counted for the record.
Yes.
You can always come back to it when he comes back on.
Into that.
Bobby's there?
Not showing up.
I don't know what's going on with my computer. It keeps dropping off. Anyway, if it happens again, Mike, uh, would, would you take over the meeting?
I think Arlene should.
Oh, Arlene, okay. Um, we're on the last item, uh.
Did you vote?
So Vice President, can we have, can we have your vote for the record on the item for the strategic plan?
Yeah, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Arlene, I thank you for doing that. If I, if it drops off again, I don't know why it's doing that.
Could it be operator, maybe operator error?
Maybe. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, um, receive and file the, C I P monthly improvements project status report. Does anyone have any questions on that item?
No questions.
Do we have to have a, um, a vote on this, Nalani?
I know, it's just a receiving file, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, the other, the, um, the item number G is consider adopting, uh, resolution twenty, twenty twenty nine two nine, approving the statement of investment policy and delegating investment function to treasurer for the fiscal year twenty twenty one. Does, do any of the board members have any items they need to talk about with this?
Could we spark it up for a report?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Sure, uh, thank you. Good afternoon, um, board members. The, um, item before you is a resolution regarding your statement of investment policy and also delegation of your, uh, investment function to the treasurer for a period of one year. Um, as you know, the, uh, California government code, um, indicates that the investment function is the responsibility of the board. And you, as the board, have the option of delegating that investment function, uh, for a period of one year only to a treasurer. And that's what this resolution accomplishes, um, uh, tonight. The, uh, just a couple of changes I wanted to highlight, uh, for you in the investment policy, um, for the next fiscal year. Uh, it's the same policy that you, uh, have always looked at, but included in the agenda item is a redline version that shows what those changes were year over year, and then a clean version would, that you would be, uh, adopting. And so just a couple of things to point out. Uh, in section eleven of the investment policy, which is banks and securities dealers, we used to have some language in there that, um, required us to have, um, one broker dealer for every five million dollars of portfolio. And that was really important that we put that in there in prior years when we were more of a, a manual type of system. And we did work, uh, over the phone with brokers, dealers. And it was really a way that we could limit the number of phone calls we were getting and the number of people that wanted to do, um, uh, business with the district and not spread everything around to people we really didn't know. Well, over the years, we have, um, uh, taken on a new platform where most of all, most all of our investments nowadays are just done, um, with a click of a mouse. Uh, I look and I review what, uh, meets the district's, uh, needs at the time that we need to place an investment, click on buy and, and that's all we go. So we really don't need that. I look and I review what meets the district's needs at the time that we need to place an investment, click on buy, and, and that's all we go. So we really don't need that language in there anymore. The second item is in your guidelines, investment guidelines and strategy. And under the permitted investment section, this is on page six of the redline version of the, of the investment policy. Just a couple of changes. Under certificates of deposit on the government code, it used to say thirty percent. That was really not correct. It should be unlimited. Certificates of deposit are nothing more than bank accounts, timed bank accounts, and they're really not investments. And so there's no limitation as to what you can place in those. One recommendation I do have is under the negotiable certificates of deposit. The government code allows up to thirty percent of the portfolio to be invested in negotiable certificates of deposit. And over the last several years, we have limited that to twenty five percent. I'd like to see that raised to thirty percent to match the government code. And, and the reason being is it became real important as we saw this market go down very drastically since March. When the market started going down, we started putting more and more funds into the negotiable certificates of deposit. We were very much up at our limit at that point in time, but it was a self-imposed limit. The government code allowed us to, to go a little bit higher. I've maintained that at that twenty five percent or less, but I would like the flexibility to go above that if the market is kind of dictating that we need to be placing our funds in those kinds of, of investment options. And then the, those are really the only two significant changes I wanted to point out. There's just some cleanup items. And when we get to the segregation of treasury functions, there's some changes in account titles just to coincide with the way things are being currently handled now. So that's really all I, I wanted to point out with the, the investment policy. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Acting Chair Uden, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mark, is a negotiable certificate of deposit a certificate you can sell to another person?
Yes, that's correct. That's why it's termed negotiable. Yep.
Yeah, okay, didn't know that. It was such a thing. Thank you.
Any, any other, any other questions for Mark? Okay, would someone make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to approve this with the conditions that we eliminate and delete and, and the substitute legislation part is presented by Mark that we delete that part and the thirty percent to delete, to add that instead of the twenty five percent for the government code. And I'd like to make the motion to, for the resolution of twenty twenty dash nine twenty.
I'll second it. Malani, would you make a, do a roll call, please?
Yes, Director Schaefer?
Just a quick clarification. Arlene, you said something about change of legislation. Did you mean just the changes that Mark had recommended?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay, all right, thank you. But I'll vote yes.
Yeah, you really listened to me.
I have to.
Director Perry?
Yes.
Secretary Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice President Uden?
Yes.
President Fairman?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to oral report of the executive compensation, executive compensation for the general manager. Item H one. Scott, do you need to do this?
I think this is mine, Mr.
Oh, okay, Alan.
Chairman Newton, yeah, thank you. This is regarding Scott's contract. And as you may remember, the, the, there's a whole series of Bell reforms that were done after what happened in the city of Bell. And one of them was that we have to have an oral report done on the agenda before you approve a contract for compensation. And now, as you'll see, the contract doesn't call for an increase in compensation, but nevertheless, the law says whenever it's on the agenda for a, an agreement for compensation, you have to have this oral report. So this is your oral report. The contract extends Scott's, Scott's employment agreement for another year. It's actually has an unlimited term in it, just, but we review every year. And he has determined, although the board had offered an increase, he has determined not to take an increase due to the situation with the rest of the population. And so he's asking for just an extension of his contract with no increase. And that's the sum and substance of everything he's asking for. The next item you'll vote on will be his contract that says that.
Does anyone have any questions about the, the general manager's contract? Can I have a motion, please?
Good for approval.
I'll second it. Any, any further discussion from the board members?
I think Scott needs to consider getting a substantial raise next year. I know he doesn't like it. But I think he needs to consider that when he makes the, we talked to him next year.
Yeah, that's probably a closed session item, but can we have a roll call? Roll, please?
Yes, Secretary Schaefer?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I want to reverse order. Director Schaefer?
I'll vote yes as well.
Thank you. Director Perry?
Yes.
Vice President Uden?
Yes.
President Fairman?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're on to local meetings.
Actually, Chairman Uden, I had a few more reports to make that are not on the agenda, if I might.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you. We had some good news this morning. We, as you remember, you might remember that we had a sewer vector, the vac all unit that caused us a lot of trouble and lots of repairs. And so we did sue them, the ERS company, Texas company, and they received our complaint this morning in Texas. And we were suing them for twenty five thousand, which is the limit of the limited jurisdiction civil courts. And we got a phone call this morning and the president asked if we would take twenty five thousand.
Whoa.
He said that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
So anyway, that was, you know, I almost fell out of my chair this morning, but that's, that was a good result. It's tentative, but supposedly the check's in the mail and we'll be doing a settlement agreement.
Good work, good work.
Thanks to everybody, Scott, and the team over at the yard worked hard on that, too.
Alan?
Pardon?
Anything else?
Yes, I have a few things, actually. Just, you just get the hook if I'm going on too long, okay?
Okay.
You know, you, we recently had the decision of Bostock versus Clayton County. The US Supreme Court ruled that the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four, Title VII, which banned sexual and other types of discrimination, was broad enough to include gay, transgender, and other discrimination. Now, this won't affect California too much because we'd already given those protections in California, but it'll be very impactful in other states. But what, what I think is, no matter what your political viewpoint is, that one in the DACA case that came down after it, it's just really good for the integrity of the Supreme Court that they don't just vote party lines. And no matter which way they go, they actually, you know, there's actually a legal analysis. And sometimes they come out opposite of the way the person appointed them might have wanted. So I, I thought that was very positive for the integrity of the Supreme Court. International Lawyers Guild versus City of Hayward, we found out that we cannot charge to, this is a California case. We could not, we cannot charge to redact documents under the Public Records Act. The Court of Appeals had told us that we could charge the cost of redactions. You know, as when we get like a homeowner's address or something like that, and we're required, based on the privacy laws, to, to redact or block out that information. And the court said, no, you can't charge for that. You have to just charge them the cost of producing the paper. Another case, the United States versus Gray, the Ninth Circuit said, you know, when you use an administrative warrant going to a backyard, and sometimes we need police to help us do that, so that, especially with a hostile homeowner. This court, this case came to the conclusion on a very divided court that the police cannot use the fact they're in that backyard to execute a special district's warrant for a health and safety type matter to collect evidence of other penal code crimes that they would be prosecuting, such as drug dealing and weapons violations. So it was a very interesting case, but this court held, the Ninth Circuit held that, that, that information, that evidence couldn't come in because it was improperly gathered. Last, we had a case called, actually not last, we had a case called People Smoking Come Down. And this is the interpreting the penal code sixty nine, which provides that it's a crime to threaten an executive officer. And this does come up occasionally. We get, you know, somebody who's, gets very hostile towards one of our code enforcement officers or something else and might threaten that person. And in this case, the person was a little unhinged and said he was actually a agent for the KGB and he could order a hit on the dip, the district attorney he was threatening. And the court said, well, obviously he was unhinged and it was not believable. So therefore, he couldn't be prosecuted for that because he couldn't carry out the threat he made. But the court said, we understand that you, even unhinged people, you have to take seriously because they can also commit crimes. And anyway, they, they gave us a test now when, when an executive officer gets threatened by a citizen. We had two cases coming out of the Voting Rights Act that are important to us. The Chula Vista case, the plaintiffs did not prevail in the Chula Vista case, and they lost the Voting Rights Act challenge that they had. In the Santa Monica case that we followed closely, the Court of Appeal argument is going to be scheduled for this June thirtieth. That concludes my report. Unless there are any questions?
Yeah, good big court. Very good.
Thank you, thank you. Are we ready to go on to local meetings? Jim, have you been following Orange County Sand District? Oh, wait, their board meeting is next week.
Right, I was going to say.
I mean, yeah, yeah. Well, their, their board meeting is Wednesday, I guess.
I was at the National Water Research Institute board meeting. And they, they elected Barbara from Plankton Beach. I can't pronounce her last name. But a wonderful person and very, very smart. She's going to be the chairman and the gal from Cypress is going to be the vice chair. So that's about all I had.
Art, did Sarfa meet this week or this month?
We meet on Thursday. Last meeting, last month, basically just elected a new president, vice president, the board. Jim and I are still on the board. You know, I think it's Barbara Galicia is going to be the president of Sarfa.
That's her name.
And I think the board is still strong. And I think we didn't, since it was a visual meeting, we didn't get a really big update on the Sarfa plan. But it was a good meeting. Short, sweet.
Okay. Is, is Doc, please?
Okay, that's me. Okay. Actually, I'll just give you the lowdown on, on May first. I had a Zoom meeting with the legislation people from Sacramento. And we went over all the legislation because pretty soon they're going to be out for recess. And then on, on the sixth of May, we had a special study session, master plan, which we all are aware, so I don't have to go into that. ISDOC board meeting was a Zoom. So actually, it was just talking what we're going to do for a general meeting, because the general meeting is the end of June. And it's coming up real fast. And of course, you know, are we going to be there or not be there? So we talked on that. And other than that, there was a whole lot, there was a lot of people at the meeting. And Mike, is there something you can add on that?
No, I was, I was just, just looking at my notes and already, and you're right. It, it was primarily focused on whether or not we're going to have a Ju, you know, the quarterly meeting. I just, an interesting note that in regards to ISDOC and LAFCO, president of East Orange County Water District Doug Davert had reached out to OCOG to get special districts more involved. So from an ISDOC perspective, I think, and Scott, I guess I'd ask you, maybe at a study session coming up the next couple of months, we could talk about how the role of special districts fit with the regional housing needs assessed, assessment. That's really what Doug was looking at. So that may be an item of study that we could have in a, you know, a study session to see how we could impact the next RENA cycle. So that, that really had to do with ISDOC, but that was about it.
Was that having SAG in there? Yeah, okay. And then on the seventh of May, let's see what I had. I had a finance committee meeting, but it was just on okaying a loan, so that was it. And then on the twelfth of May, I had a study session that we all went to. So I don't have to say too much on that one. And at, and later on, I went to the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting and it looks like a good committee. And then Mike was reelected, Mike Carey was reelected, or I should say, yeah, elected for president, for chair. And I can't remember her name for vice chair. Scott, do you know? How are you?
Yes, Elde, oh gosh, no, I forgot. Yeah, Katz, right? Elde Katz?
Yeah.
Okay, well, she's going to be the vice chair. And they look like a real good committee, you know, really interested in everything. So, and then, then we talked about ledge days on my professional development committee that I sit on. And we just decided that, of course, we couldn't have it down at the desert because it's such a mess. And so the desert's really nice. They said, you can come next time. And we can't because we're going to Monterey. So the time after that, we'll, we'll go down to the desert, so that'll make up for that. So we will be going to Monterey in next year for sure. And that's being all taken care of. And we have, that's about it. I can see Zoom, Zoom, Zoom. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Mike, you have a, a report on FDRMA?
Actually, Bob, we have our board meeting this Wednesday and Thursday. A pretty heavy agenda in terms of members of the pool who have asked to withdraw. Members of the pool have come in. We've got some issues with reinsurance, but I'll, I'll give you more details that applies next month.
Okay, I, I attended Waco and we had a speaker, it was a Zoom meeting, and the speaker was Kamala Nemeth. She's the director of water resources. I forget the agency's exact name. She gave us an update basically on the, the tunnel project up north. I thought, I thought it was probably the best explanation. You know, she didn't seem to have any biases. She, I think she addressed the north issues and the south issues. And I, I thought, I thought it was an exceptional meeting. Basically, Governor Newsom has directed that they basically almost start from scratch. And they're going to do a, kind of EIR for a one tunnel assessment. And it's going to, it's going to take a long time, probably. Did anyone else attend that meeting?
Yeah, I did. I did, Bob, and I, I agree with you. I thought the, the young lady who did the presentation was excellent. Yeah, I did. I did, Bob, and I, I agree with you. I, I thought the, the young lady who did the presentation was excellent. I thought it was really good.
Um, he was, he was not biased and, you know, um, does anyone else have any meetings that they need to report on?
I also was at that Waco meeting, Bob, and some of the things I noted besides what you did is I didn't know that two-thirds of the snow from the Sierras goes to Southern California. That's a pretty significant amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thought of that, too.
All the water regulations are guided by the Delta officials. And, um, let's see. That what they're concerned about is a seventy-two percent chance of a six-point-seven magnitude quake in the next twenty-five years, which could affect the minor faults in the Delta and the piles of levees. So they're concerned about that. And then, um, they're concerned about sea level rise in twenty-one hundred.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they project a ten-foot sea rise by the end of this century.
Right.
Wow, that's something.
Yeah, I mean, that, that'll make
You know, you
coastline property come, come open, but anyone else need to report on, uh, meetings to pay attention to?
You might make a note of it that, uh, the July meeting for Waco is going to be the tenth because they're on, they're doing something. So anyway, that's what I heard. And then, uh, aside from that, I just wanted to report that the annual conference that I said about Monterey is August thirtieth and to September second. Just so that you write it down. Um, we're still working on the speakers and everything. And then the GM Summit Conference in Tahoe, of course, first it was postponed, then it was delayed. And so anyway, it's going to be, uh, twenty twenty-one now. And it should be coming out soon. And I think it's still going to be in Tahoe, just, I, I have a feeling it'll be the twenty-first. You know, it'll be next year. Um, the Secretary Clerk Conference will be in Anaheim, August thirtieth to September twenty-second. And that's twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
That's it.
Anyone else need your part of the meeting?
Yes, I, I attended the city council meeting in the visual. And, uh, just a couple of things. Okay, proclamation for the Paul Van Doren Day for the founder Vance, his, his son, he lives in, he lived in Costa Mesa and his sons and daughters went to Estancia. He was born in, uh, June twelfth, nineteen thirty. So I think this is a good proclamation for the city. And, um, let's see, they, we talked, the, the basic thing was, uh, talking about towing services contract and fiscal year budget appropriation limit. And then the parkway maintenance and new sidewalk construction. And, uh, the recommendation was for the city council to recommend what the, the, um, the services department's engineering division recommended. But that was about it.
Um, somebody, somebody mentioned that city council was going to have a, uh, a study session on sole sourcing, the solid lease collective, the industrial and commercial solid lease.
Really? That'd be great.
Well, Scott, do you remember who said that?
Uh, they had a, um, yesterday, they had a meeting, uh, the city had a meeting with, with the haulers and we're trying to get input of what was discussed in that meeting. That's, that's as far as I know. I don't know if they're going to have a city council meeting. As, as far as I know, they're, they're at least having that discussion with the haulers that have sole sourcing for multifamily units.
Okay.
Oh, the haulers.
Just multifamily, okay.
Yes.
Interesting.
Anyone else have any, any, any input for this meeting?
Good meeting, Bob, and, um, we'll sort of see you guys soon.
Are, are we, are we ready to adjourn, uh, in, in honor of Ryan Ferriman?
No, I wonder, are we under, uh, let's see, what, what is it?
Oh, we need, we need oral communi-, oral communications and director comments. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there you, there you go.
Okay.
So can I say something on that?
Sure.
Okay, I just, you know, I was thinking, and this goes to my fellow members on the direction of what we're doing. And everything that's going on in the world right now and, and especially around us in Orange County. And as I look at special districts and everybody's, you know, kind of fine tuning what they're doing and talking about this and that, I really would like to see a study session, a special study session with nothing but the budget. And with the budget would be Mark and Caitlin, for sure, and of course, Scott. And, uh, you know, anyone who's financially involved, that we, I think that's it, though, aside from us. And we could be able to find out what the budget looks like for now. But maybe we have some comments on it that maybe we can either improve or disapprove something before, you know, uh, we can get a better understanding because people are getting really curious lately of what's going on, you know, who's doing this and what's happening. And, and I don't think any of us have a real stronghold on what, what's going on completely. So, um, I know, you know, as far as Scott with his, uh, personnel and with the staff, that's his department. I don't want to touch that. I'm just talking about, uh, a budget meeting with just fiscal type of financing, you know, just talking on that.
God, do you know what the, uh, schedule is? Or would you put a schedule out on that?
Yes, actually, um, we, we are preparing. Mark, Mark and Caitlin's been working on putting together, uh, uh, the financial strength of the, of the, of the district, and we're going to present that at the July study session.
Yeah, but I don't want it at a July study session. I want it separate. Because I want to be able to sit down to me and have us look at everything and ask questions and not feel that we're rushing through something. At study sessions, you know, we kind of know where we're at and we just, you know, hop through things. But this is different. This is important. You know, it's where we're going, where we're headed and what's happening.
Um, I, I'm trying to get some, some clarification, what you, what, exactly what you want. I mean, our, our budgets are already adopted right now. I mean, what we're going to present to you is, is, um,
The budget.
This, you know, where, where we are financially in our, in our budget, uh, I think we're going to make some, uh, some, make some suggestions, you know, what do we do as i- i- in case of emergencies? Do we have enough money in our reserves?
Yeah.
Change those kind of policy. Is that what you're kind of looking for?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Okay, and that's, that's what, that's what Mark and Caitlin's working on right now.
But, you know, and then just separately, having something of a, a study session where we could sit and talk about this and see how we're doing, you know? Because to me, you know, anything could come up and we have to see what we have in reserves, what we will be doing, what, what's recommended, that kind of thing.
Right.
You know? Anyway, how does everyone else, the directors feel on this?
I think that would be appropriate.
So, so, so the board wants a special meeting just on, on, on this item?
Yes, just to talk on it.
Can you arrange that, Scott?
So, is that what I'm hearing from the board? Then the rest of the board wants a special meeting?
Yes.
It'd hurt anything to have a conversation about, uh, some of, some of our possible options to look at, uh, I think, I think it'd be healthy as long as the timeframe works out.
Okay, I'll, I'll have Nolani reach out to you and, and find a date that works for everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any, anyone else have, uh, oral communications or director's comments?
I, Bob, yeah, a couple of quick things, if you don't mind.
Oh, go, yeah.
Uh, Scott, you know, we talked about it, our, our one-on-one about, uh, CRNR's trucks and how they're moving trucks in and out and they're, they're doing something. Could, could we get a report at a study session about where CRNR is in terms of our fleet, how old, replacement, just a, a general overall, um, status of what's going on with the fleet of trucks? I'd, I'd like that to be a study session item.
Okay.
And then the other thing, and I, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but, um, my laptop, and I, I guess Nolani and Gene, I'll, uh, my laptop does not charge very well. And I don't know if it's something in here that I need to wash out or clean it, but like, even during this meeting tonight, I've had my laptop or my iPad plugged in and the little charging number up in the right-hand corner is going down while it's being charged, while, while I'm, so am I doing something or, and, and you don't have to answer me now, we can, we can talk, but
Mike, Mike, do you have your charger plugged in?
Yes, Bobby. The little, the little lightning bolt comes on in the little green. But, but, but during this meeting tonight, it's gone from like fourteen percent down to seven percent.
I, I actually think that's what happened to my computer. It's, uh, you know, I've repositioned it and I think, I think the power went, you know, went off. I'm just, I'm holding the power button on.
Hmm.
Director Schaefer, is your laptop a, a, a district laptop?
Yes, sir.
Hmm. That's something. I'll take a look at it, Director Schaefer.
I, I appreciate it. You, you have a million other more important things, but it's just kind of crazy that it, I can't charge it like I do my personal app, uh,
Look at it for you.
Thank you. I, I always appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Bob, I have one last thing.
Sure.
It's, uh, when I was ill and got out of the hospital, the district sent me a really nice bouquet of flowers. And I want to thank Scott and the staff for doing that for me.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure. Please, you can do it.
Thank you.
Glad you're feeling better, Coach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good enough.
I can't, I can't do anything for a while, but I'm getting better.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, those doctors had a lot of gall.
They did have a lot of gall.
Oh, wow.
Uh, does anyone else, uh, need, need, need to make comments? If not, we'll adjourn this meeting in honor of, um, uh, Ryan Ferriman.
Good job, man.
The mea-, the meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, Bobby. Good job.
Thank you, everyone.
Best, Jim. Best of everything, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
Take care, Jim. Yes, Jim.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.